Welcome to our meeting. We are at the Legacy Campus in the boardroom. It is Thursday, August 4th, 2022, at 5:30 PM. And we are glad you're all here. Thanks for coming. We will start with Roll Call and Larry.
Larry Jepson, Board Member.
Randall Bagley, Board Member.
Roger Pulsifer, Board Member.
Terry Rhodes, Board Member.
Kathy Christensen, Board Member.
Chris Corcoran, Board Member.
Jared Black, Business Administrator.
Thank you. And Steve Norton and Jeff Nielsen are excused. The pledge and mission statement will be conducted by Jared Black. Please rise.
By pledge and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission is to educate students for success in a changing world.
Thank you, Jared. And seeing that we have no one signed up to give public input, we will move on in our agenda to the next section, which is the reports' agenda. First on our reports' agenda is an early learning plan presented by Beverly and not Jake. Beverly?
Okay. I can go through the reading if she doesn't have. All right. All right. We wanted to present our early learning plan for approval with you. It should be in your documents. I'll cover the math portion, and if Jake doesn't get here quickly enough, I'll go over the reading. In the math, we have a math goal that we need to, that we submitted, and it was approved by the State Board of Education. Our goal is that we will have all first grade students increase, our proficiency of students in first grade will increase by 5%. So last year, total students proficient at the end of the year was 48%, and we want to increase that proficiency.
Beverly, sorry to interrupt. Can you move the microphone down so people at home can hear you?
Okay. So we want to increase that proficiency from 48% to 53% this coming year. We're going to do that by providing a lot of support for teachers, and we know this is, this is year two of this new enrollment of this test, and it'll be interesting to see as we go. But we have a good plan in place to get that done. Do you want to do?
Yeah, I'm good.
Or do you want me? Okay.
Before, before you move on, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So Kathy and I were in attendance at one of the school, elementary schools, when you were there to give a presentation to the teachers about math and a particular strategy that they could use to help their students. Are the teachers in general receptive to your help?
Yes. With, with myself and my team of facilitators, it's, we're, right now, we're building trust. We're building rapport with those teachers and with the principals because it's a new system. They've never had a math facilitator before, but overall, we have really good positive feedback. We did a survey at the end of the year, and the positive, the positive feedback was overwhelming. Please, can you spend more time in our schools because they've, they are divided between, last year, they were divided between five and six schools. So the feedback was, we need them here more. And from principals, I've heard from several of them that, that they are reporting that the classes that our facilitators are able to get into and mentor with teachers, they're seeing great improvements in that instruction and using those strategies. So, yeah, I think it's well received. Of course, you have a few that are not as open to it, but that's where the rapport and the trust comes in.
Great.
How many facilitators are there?
Currently, there are three. Tomorrow, we're in the process of hiring a fourth, and then including myself. I'm actually supporting Lewiston as a facilitator in addition to my role at the district level because we're building a, a system we want to be in, hands on the ground, so.
Thank you. Great. Does anyone else have questions for Bev? All right. Thank you. Jake?
Hello, Board. Sorry I was late. I, 6 o'clock was what I had in my mind, so I learned something new today. Check the website for the time for the meeting you're supposed to go to. So with the, you know, Bev, I'm sure already explained the math side of the early learning plan. You know, the literacy, the literacy side of it's the, has been the same for, you know, the last several years, and they've added math in. For literacy, where we're proposing two separate goals, and that's goal number one, and then goal number three that you see in the, the early learning plan document that you have in Board Docs. The way that these goals were calculated is we look at longitudinal data going back over the last three years. So the 1920 year obviously omitted because of, of the, the soft closure, so we went back to the 1819 year. And so we take, the state guides us through this process of, of looking at our data and deciding where there's areas that we decide we want to improve, or we fill our strategic areas for growth. And then we calculate growth in those areas of the last, or average over the last, those last three years, and then add 3% to 5% to have it be a stretch goal. So both of these goals were designed using that format. The first goal is one that we have used to target for our kindergarteners. So taking the beginning of year percentage proficient at Acadients and then increasing that number by 14% by the end of the year is our goal. We're looking forward to that goal, especially because of some of the expansion with our all-day kindergarten, full-day kindergarten offerings that will be able to give our kindergarten students more instruction time and more intervention time. And we are, you know, we think that'd be a great place to give some extra support and to, you know, meet one of our state goals. The other state goal is we're actually targeting third graders, and rather than having it be a specific, or rather having it be the composite goal, overall, that takes all the submeasures out and has it be just a one lump sum number, we're going to target the oral reading fluency subtest on Acadients. And so on that one, because we've actually lost ground on average the last three to five years, or the last three years, our goal from that one is just to maintain. So whatever our goal is, or whatever our benchmark proficiency is in oral reading fluency in the fall administration, our goal is to maintain that and not lose the, the numbers that we have the last few years. Now, it hasn't been dramatic. We're talking a percentage or two of students, but when you calculate that out over 17 elementary schools, it's about three dozen students that have, began the year at benchmark, you know, but, but have at the end of the year that they actually have slipped down into the yellow range. And it, you know, it's not necessarily a one-for-one because of move-ins and move-outs and things like that, but we're looking forward for that goal as well for the third grade. So any questions around those two, those two literacy goals, and then we can start addressing the professional learning grant?
I have a question, unless somebody else has one. Tell, please tell us what, what significance oral reading fluency has for third graders.
How much time do you have?
All night.
So the way that oral fluent, oral reading fluency is measured is that's the, it's a, the students do three one-minute timings, and then the middle score from that is, is, is what gets, the words per minute is, is the, the score for that. The reason that fluency, that, that measure matters is because when you and I as adults are reading connected text, there is a, there's really two elements at play. There is a decoding element, which is where our brain is recognizing the words, transitioning those into phonemes or sounds or whole words. And then there is a language element where we link those words up to words that we already have in our brain, which connects it to schemas and allows us to read. And so there's a lot of research that indicates that students who can read fluently, smoothly and accurately and with expression, that that actually frees up cognitive resources in order to be focusing on making meaning in text. And so for a lot of years, we put a lot of stock in Acadients and before Acadience Dibble's assessment because we want to have fluent, accurate readers who don't have to spend time tripping and stumbling through the words, that they can read smoothly and accurately because then that allows the upper grades, you know, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, to be able to focus on teaching their students meaning because we have students who have the automatic part of reading down or the, the reading with automaticity. Is that short enough synopsis, or would you like more?
Well, it was kind of a trick question on my part, sorry. Because I have a son who exited elementary without fluency, and I, we didn't discover until he graduated from high school that he has dyslexia. And now at 27, he's avoiding an associate's degree because it requires English 10-10, which is too bad because he's a super bright kid.
Yeah.
But, so I just wonder how fluency, can you detect dyslexia that early in third grade?
I, this is Jake personally. I struggle with the term dyslexia a little bit because it's a term that's become very charged, and it's a term that means different things to different people. What, there's a, a large amount of, I mean, if a student is struggling to read, it's on one of, at its broadest level, it's going to be on one of those two sides. It's either going to be on the decoding side, or it's on the language side. And so if it's on the decoding side, then there's a lot of research that indicates that that is phonological processing is where the hangup is. And so phonological processing is the part of our brain that is able to take those sounds or individual sounds and blend them into words, or take a whole word and hear the individual sounds. And that's, that skill is really tightly associated with things like spelling as well because if you can't hear the word right in your head, or you can't hear the sounds distinguished, you're not going to be able to reproduce it, you know, spelled. So, but it's one of the great things we really like about Acadients is that it allows us to measure how our students are doing with things like phonemic awareness in kindergarten and first grade. It allows us to detect things like accuracy as well. And so while we don't, you know, necessarily use the term dyslexia, we, we, we do monitor and watch students on how they're doing with, can they blend sounds into a word? Can they take a word and blend it, or and segment it into its individual sounds? Okay, if they can do that, then can they take those sounds and connect them to letters and be able to, you know, read a nonsense word that has, you know, consonant, vowel consonant of just three random, three random letters? Can they blend that together? And then moving on to whole words and sentences and that sort of thing. So the Cadence is a good assessment because it allows us to, rather than get caught up in terms or labels or things, that we can actually look at different reading processes and then teach that process.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
So I have a question that has nothing to do with your, your program here either, but I was wondering about this this week. In our schools, in elementary and maybe even in middle school, do we still allow time for teachers just to read to students?
As in, just doing like a read aloud to students?
And they just listen to the reading?
That's a great question. It's not something that is built like explicitly into the schedule, like, here is your read aloud time. However, in our second and third grade curriculum, it's actually part of the curriculum, there's a read aloud component to it that actually connects to the other stories. In the, let's see, in the spring, it was like, yeah, it was in May, me and some of the instructional coaches, we actually met with a group of first grade teachers from two different schools to talk with them about read aloud and the power that it has for oral language. I think in other, other places, read aloud can be seen as a soft, fluffy, you know, not necessarily impactful time, but there's some interesting newer research that shows that it's actually a great time to support students' oral language because you don't have to worry about the decoding part. You can just focus on the meaning and the message and the text. And so I think if you were going to every, if you were to go into every individual elementary classroom, you would see something different because it's not something, it's not something that we've coordinated and articulated and aligned like we have other elements of the curriculum, but I can fairly confidently say a majority of our students are doing it, or of our teachers are doing it in some form. And I can also confidently say that it's an area that I want to give teachers tools to say, if you're doing read aloud, here are some super simple ways that you can help students listen to a great plot, but then also be able to reap more academic benefit from it as well.
Thank you. I just think that's a really valuable part of reading for children is to have them listen to reading. And you would hope that parents would do that every day from the time they're born until whenever. I have heard that if a, a parent does read to a, a child one book a day, by the time they're five, they've read 1,845 books to that child, which has increased a lot of their oral language, listening skills, and a bunch of other things. So that just got me wondering, there's got to be kids in our schools who don't have that. And it's a big deal to me that that happened. So just wondering.
Well, these, these teachers that, that I mentioned, they, so they're two of our Title I schools, and they came to us saying, we feel like our students are coming with less language capacity than they have in the past, which spurred that. And one of my favorite studies is 1988, and it looks at the, the syntax of children's literature and actually compared that to things like dialogue on television, the text complexity of newspaper. And what that research showed in, in that corpus of text was, in the children's text they analyzed, the text was more complex, it had more rare words and more multi-syllabic words than conversation between college graduates. And so that's a plug for why literature, you know, does matter at home and, and also at school.
Thanks. Appreciate that.
Early learning plan, or the, the professional learning? You want to talk math?
Okay. So for the professional learning grant, there's a pot of money that we are able to use to build capacity in our teachers. And for the math side of that, we've divided that lump sum into two parts, half for literacy and half for, for math. Last year, when we did this, we allocated it all for literacy, but we're seeing more need in math, and so we are using that money to support an FTE for another math facilitator. That's what that money is going for. That will provide better impact. It'll have those facilitators having one full day in each school, so they'll have four schools instead of five or six. And we feel like that's a really good use of that money, and it'll bring it down to the school, teacher, kid level when we can have more support for teachers. So that's the plan for math. There's a lot of, you know, PD ideology and plans around what that's going to look like and how we're going to support them, which is what we've been doing with our facilitators last year, but that's expanding and enhancing this year as well. So if you have questions, I'm happy to answer.
So similarly, on the, on the reading side, so we took that lump sum from the, the state and just, just, we're going to cut it in half. So half will go to fund the, the math facility that we have. The other half is going to fund a literacy professional learning specialist. And that, that job is going to have a couple different moving parts with it. One of the moving parts is with SB 127 that was passed in the spring, our teachers are required to do the letters training this year. And so there's a lot of different logistics that, that come with that, but one of the really important logistics that, you know, isn't going to happen unless we make it happen is showing teachers ways that that can get bridged into practice, right? That here's, here's our curriculum, and here's how we, here's how we do things, and we do it well. Here's learning that we're getting. How do we, what does that mean for us in Cache County School District? And so this, this halftime person will be able to help do that in a couple different venues. One will be with our literacy facilitators that we have throughout the district, providing professional learning or, or helping, helping them take letters content and then show, what does this mean for intervention for our at-risk kiddos? But then also potentially doing other PLC grade-level meetings or meeting with teachers and discussing or coaching how to take and bridge that into practice. So we look forward to have that halftime or that half contract, and they might have another half contract that's from another pot. We're, we'll kind of see how that shakes out. That's probably what it'll end up being, but having part of that being spent on how do we provide teachers with, with knowledge? How do we provide our literacy facilitators with the knowledge and skills to just continually hone our craft and do what we do better?
So this is a grant from the State Board of Education, right?
Yeah.
And is this a, is this a temporary thing, or is this a, an ongoing, is this ongoing funding?
Last year was the first year that it was offered. It was, it was brand-new money last year. I, and it's, it's in, I can't remember which bill it was under, but it is in the state code. So we anticipate that it's, you know, that it is ongoing unless legislative changes change it. So this is ongoing.
I know which bill it was then. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? Anyone have questions? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, we have Brittany Foster to give us a report on the library policy revision.
Well, the policy is about reading, but if you want to know all the stuff that Jake knows, I won't be able to share that with you. So maybe Jake can come back up if you have reading questions. So in the spring, the state legislature passed a sensitive materials bill, and in response to that bill, the USBE passed a rule that we needed to update our, or to have a library policy and then update it to include the provisions of the law. Specifically, they didn't mention, but specifically, that was the law that we needed to be addressing was the sensitive materials. I don't know why my screen's not coming on yet. And luckily, we had a policy already. There were several districts around the state that did not have a library policy, but fortunately, we had Board Member Larry Jepson many years ago helped to craft a policy, and it's been working quite well for us. So all we needed to do was give it a facelift. So I've, I've got this up here on the board for me to look at so I can kind of go through what we updated. And when I say "we," we do have a library group that meets monthly, and we have a leadership for that group. The library group includes all of the library media teachers in the district, as well as the specialists, so library media teachers and specialists in the district. And the leadership include two elementary reps and two secondary reps. So the library media group leaders, Ashley Addis, who's the library media group supervisor, myself, and Larry Jepson got together on Monday, and we compared the USBE model policy to our own policy and tweaked as we felt like needed to, to follow the law, and then just to update as needed. So as you see in Board Docs or on my, on the screen, everything in green is what we've added, and everything in red is what we took out. So we just, in the first, in the purpose, we added digital citizenship because that has been an important component of the work our library media teachers do, and we thought that was important to include that in our purpose and philosophy. And then in the collection and development, we tweaked it a little bit. Mainly, we added, or we changed in part G, we added the word "collection" rather than "views." We felt like the, the purpose of developing a collection should, one of the purposes or one of the guiding ideas behind it is to have a balanced collection that meets the needs of all your students based on reading levels, grade levels, interests, genres, fiction, nonfiction, and then also representative of your student community. So that's why we changed that word to "collection" rather than "views." And then we added "I" to have a collection that's representative of diverse cultures, language, traditions, values, needs, and lived experiences. That actually, that term came straight from USBE's Board Rule Regarding Diversity, Inclusion, and Equity. We felt like that was an important component to include. And then we changed it. Before, for part J, it said just literary quality. We wanted it to be overall literary quality, so we're looking at a work as a whole rather than a piece. And then we added "L" legality because that was what we've been tasked to do. Do you have any questions on those tweaks that we made to the policy? All right. Number four, we took out as we didn't feel that it was necessary for the district supervisor to establish other policies for collect, establishing a collection because it's already laid out in Section 1 in how to put together collections. We didn't feel, we felt like that was redundant. And then if we come down to three, Part A, this change was specifically for Kathy because she doesn't like a one-sentence paragraph. So we combined two one-sentence paragraphs to make one sent, one two-sentence paragraph.
I remembered.
Did I actually say that?
Sorry.
And because we also know that that's the correct way to have a sentence. And then we come down to the challenge portion of our policy, and this is where we have a lot of tweaks. Our previous policy only allowed a parent to make a challenge, and the model policy from USBE included other individuals, and we, we thought that that was some good guidance. So we included students as an option of someone that could challenge a material, and we also included the administrator of the school. The reason we selected the administrator was we felt that if a teacher or another staff member had a concern, they might bring it to the library media teacher first, discuss it, and maybe it's something that could be explained without a challenge. If not, then that teacher or staff member could go to an administrator, and the administrator could challenge the material. We didn't feel like it was fair to put staff members challenging staff members and put them in an awkward situation like that, so that's why we put administrator there. Do you have any questions on that change? All right. Then the challenge of the library media process for part B, we've, we just added, or no, let's see, B was already there, we just separated it from that paragraph above, so it was its own little section. And then for the school-level challenge, we added Section 5, and this comes from the model policy, and it addresses the sensitive materials law that was passed in the spring, and just gives some direction on how that will be handled. And then in 6, we've just included this piece also briefly from the model policy, just tweaked the wording a little bit in deciding whether it's content age-appropriate. We'll look at the material as a whole rather than in pieces. And then we'll also consider expert reviews, committee members' experience, community standards. And number 7, this also came from the model policy in deciding whether the material is taken as a whole, has, whether it has serious literary, artistic, political, or science type, science value as described in Section 6. They, the committee should consider whether or not it has serious value, not just any value. And we should also consider that elementary and middle school have different concerns than high school. And then finally, 8, the school committee will determine the amount of time needed for an adequate review. Before that, we didn't really have a specific way of deciding it, so we suggested that the school committee get together ahead of time, decide what that work is, how long it will take them to review it, give the time period for that. And from the model policy, we also chose this, to try to keep it between 30 school days and no longer than 60 school days so that we can have enough time but not drag it out all school year. And then down to number 11, the school committee chair shall create a summary of the deliberations to keep on file for a minimum of four years. We didn't have anything in the policy previously for keeping written record of what had happened. And then number 13, we added, and this came from the model policy as well, is that we would limit the number of challenges if there were a lot coming from the same individual and having similar results, or it was becoming burdensome for the school. What questions do you guys have for this section?
I have one on line number 10 of Section C. It says, "The parent will be notified of the school committee's decision in writing." But a parent isn't the only person allowed to.
I thought we caught all those. Or I should say, I thought I caught, I caught all those. It's supposed to say "requester," so I can edit that to say "requester" because it could be a parent, a student, or an administrator. So thank you for catching that.
Just clarifying. Thank you.
I forgot to review how the committee is, is selected. We didn't change that. But down at the bottom in the definitions, it defines who is on a school committee if there is a challenge. So it consists of an odd number of voting members, not less than five, and may include administrator, department chair. And actually, I, we're going to change this to administrator or designee in case the administrator doesn't have time to read like a 900-page book. We've had that happen before. Department chair or grade level teacher, parent representative, student representative where appropriate, and the school library media teacher or specialist would be the chair and a voting member. We have in our library handbook for our library media teachers and specialists, it has outlined how to hold a meeting. They've got some directions there and also some direction that they should be meeting with their committee at least once a year, whether there's a challenge or not, just so the committee knows what the, the plan is if there is a challenge. Okay, and then part D, if a requestor is not happy or satisfied with the results of the school committee's decision, we, we tweaked a couple of things here. We just, essentially, we've changed a few wordings. And then we added six, that the district would determine the amount of time needed, just like the school committee, because there wasn't a, a piece in the previous policy that would address the length of time. So again, 30 school days, no longer than 60. And then we just changed a couple of other words. What questions you have for section D?
So how is the district appeal committee constituted?
Good question. So the district appeal committee consists of an odd number of voting members, not less than five, and may include a member of the superintendency or designee, a parent representative, myself, or a, my own designee, a student representative where appropriate, an elementary and/or secondary library media professional, depending on the work. And teachers, the district supervisor shall be a voting member and chair of the committee.
Thanks.
Yep.
Can you add a school board member in there?
Sure.
I just think for parents, that is, that seems to be important.
Yes.
So if you would add that, unless fellow board members, what do you think about that?
I think that's a great idea.
It seems to matter to parents that school board members be involved in that.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's a great way for you to be involved.
Okay.
So I will add that. I will also be adding that the secondary teaching and learning specialist, or learning director can have a, oh wait, no, not. Mine, that has a designee. The administrator can also have a designee at the school. So those are the, I'll be making three tweaks so far that we've brought up. All right. And then finally, we do have to have a form for parents or administrators or students to complete if they would like to request a reconsideration. So, oh, looks like I have a weird little typo there, but I'll fix that as well. So we've, we tweaked our form considerably. We looked at the model policy form. We looked at our form, and we kind of decided what, which questions on both would be helpful. So we did ask them to include what concerns them about the material. We did want to know if they attended the school because one of the provisions of the policy, which was already in the policy, is that the student must attend, a student must attend the school. So a parent or a student from another school cannot challenge a book at a, at a different school from where they attend. And then three, is the challenge related to the sensitive materials? And that would help us to know that we need to be looking at the Attorney General's guidelines on that and looking at the legality of it. We added, we removed, "To what in the work do you object?" Because we felt like "What concerns you?" was a better way of asking that. And we removed, "What do you feel might be the result of using this material?" Because that's just speculating, and we thought there wasn't really a reason to speculate. If they wanted to, they could include that in two. Number four, what age group would you, oh, that one's already there. Five, we asked them to include if there's any value to this material. And it says, "See critac, selection criteria below." I need to erase that. That's not supposed to be there. And then number seven, what outside sources have you consulted concerning this work? Because we would like them to hopefully be looking at, you know, some literary critic reviews or things like that. But they might also be looking on Facebook or somewhere else on the internet, and we'd like to know where that is. So we might be able to consult that as well. And then question eight, we changed what the selection choice was for what a parent would, or a requestor would like to see happen as a result of the challenge. And we changed it to match the wording that was previously in the policy up above, which was the options could be to restrict it from your own child only, to relocate it to a different place in the library, or to remove it completely from the library. What questions do you have about the form? And I will edit that number five error.
I'm just disappointed you're eliminating seven because that would make a good literary essay.
We had a debate about that.
Juxtapose, compare and contrast.
We did debate, should we leave this in and see what they, you know? Because there might be a really good reason that the piece is in the library and because of that theme. But we didn't feel like we should be giving parents homework. And the students probably don't want extra homework either. So administrators find they can have the homework. All right. Any questions, concerns, other changes?
Brittany, will you just go up to definitions?
Yes.
And I haven't had a chance to look this over at all, but I will. And I'll call you if there's anything. But on B, come down to the fourth line. Let's see, is that the one? Oh, the fifth line needs to be moved up.
Oh, yes. Yep. I will change that. Thank you. Anything else?
Thanks for all your work on this.
Yeah.
And also, could I just ask, I mean, I don't know if this is something that you can even answer, but, but based on the prior process, you know, without this update, how often would you say that you receive this kind of request from somebody in the district to review material?
We didn't receive any last year. Ashley, do you? Well, oh, here's, here's Jan. She's one of our library media teachers at Spring Creek.
No, I have not had an official one. I, I, I had maybe four books last year, but if a parent brought it to my attention, you know, usually it was a book I hadn't read, and I would just be like, oh, yeah, thank you so much. And, you know, off it went. I've had a couple of books that parents have brought to my attention, but they happen to be like neighbors that, you know, would like, were surprised that maybe a book was in the library, but it had no content. I didn't feel like, so I have not had an official in five years.
Okay.
Usually if the parent's bringing up, they're right. Like, and, and, you know, it was a brand new book that I haven't had a chance to read.
Yeah. So we haven't had any official challenges for many years. A lot of times.
In all my years in the library, I never had an official challenge.
So it's relatively rare.
Yeah. And a lot of things can be addressed without having a challenge process. For example, one of the elementary teachers had a parent who felt like a book didn't fit well for her kindergartner, and her kindergartner had checked it out. And it was actually about The Little Mermaid. And it was a, I don't know what version of Little Mermaid it was. But anyway, they, she didn't really like it. And so they just, that library media teacher said, you know what? I see your point. Let's move it over into this section of the library where kindergartners don't go. And that solved the problem because it wasn't really a content. It was more of a, I'm not even, a maturity level of, yeah, age appropriateness for kindergarten. So most, most things can be handled by having a discussion. It's when a parent wants the book completely removed where we probably would come to a challenge. If we were like, yeah, you're, you're not right. It shouldn't be removed. So.
And, and removal requests are happening in lots of other school districts in our state.
I've, I've heard. I'm just wondering if there's been any pattern up to this point.
But I mean, I've had an increase in parents emailing me or dropping by, asking me questions such as, just checking to make sure you have any bad books in this library, you know, kind of generalized statements, or emailing me, asking me how to access our catalog because they're looking for these books. The other districts are.
Okay. They're looking for books that other districts are trying to restrict. And so there has been an increase in parent involvement, but nothing official. We've had pretty responsive library media teachers who I think have a good pulse on what's appropriate for our students. Our library media teachers want students to be happy and enjoy what they're reading, and they, they make good choices for the most part. And then we have a really supportive parent community, which I think you all know. So.
All right. Anyone else have questions for Brittany? All right. Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks for your work.
Yeah.
Next on our reports agenda, we have a COVID update by Mr. Tim Smith. We won't call him by his former name.
Thank you. I think this was at the board's request to know how we were headed into the school year, year three of COVID, I guess. Basically, I gave you a couple of handouts there. One of them just reminds us at the top that in February 2022, the governor along with the state epidemiologist changed the focus a little bit that we're moving from the pandemic phase of COVID to the endemic phase. And basically, what that means is we start to treat COVID as we would any other illness that we encounter. And that's a, a major shift. And our response plan for 2223 focuses or is built around that basic philosophy. So we're going to follow the illness protocols that we have for the school district, whether a student has the flu or COVID or chickenpox or whatever the case may be, any kind of contagious illness. And I gave you a copy of those illness protocols. The one caveat to that is we do follow some isolation, a few isolation guidelines or recommendations. And we didn't outline those because they change so rapidly and can change by variant. So I think the current recommendation for COVID, the COVID variant that's out there right now is that individuals who test positive isolate for five days. So we just left this open-ended, that you follow the current isolation practices. If you remember, in the spring of last year, the legislature passed some legislation regarding COVID and eliminated the test-to-stay program in the schools and indicated that the, the legislature and some other groups at the state would make some decisions based on the current variant on what protocols might be happening in schools. And so those will play out as, as things shift or we get into a, you know, the flu slash illness portion of our, and that November through February portion of our school year and see how that, that comes about. But the COVID response plan just focuses on following our illness protocols. Of course, face coverings are always welcome in our schools. We have COVID testing available. We have COVID vaccinations available. Both of those are personal decisions. We do recommend people get tested at, at least so they know what measures to take in their own family. And then we, we always focus on hygiene as far as that goes. We did meet with the health department yesterday and go through these protocols. And so they've been informed on the direction we're heading and had an opportunity to, to give their response to what we were doing. And we're, we're wholeheartedly supportive of the, of the pathway we're taking. They are going to do some things in their role to kind of keep us updated on what the latest trends are. For example, they informed us yesterday that the, I think the hospitalization rate for the, for the flu right now is at a .6 per 100,000. So that's infinitesimal, how many people go to the hospital based on getting flu. If for COVID, it's six, which, per 100,000, which is still a pretty low hospitalization rate right now. So any questions you have on COVID going into the 2223 school year?
I have a question just concerning potential absenteeism. How that, how it, does the district have a plan to help our teachers through that?
If teachers contract COVID?
No, no, no. Students. When students are, I mean, when a lot of students are absent. So for the last half of last year, we shortened the school day so that.
Right.
So that teachers could catch up to all of the absenteeism.
Yeah.
What if we see that again?
If you remember, we started last year going back to the full school schedule. I think we got all the way till late January, early February, when our numbers were so high, 20% absenteeism, that we did go back to the shortened schedule. We, we are starting this school year on a full schedule. But the state has a waiver in place for the 990-hour requirement again this year. So it does leave that option open to us if we get significant rates of absenteeism, that we could make those shifts. It's hard for a system as large as ours to make those shifts. So I think it would be a last resort type thing to bring some relief to our teachers, much like it was last year. But that option is open to us, just so you know.
Okay. Is there a reason that we, well, no, I won't ask that question because it's self-explanatory. Anybody else have questions for Tim? Thanks for putting this update together. We appreciate that.
Well, thank you for your support.
A little different than two years ago at this time.
Yes, it was. We had a room full here. But there's a lot we didn't know two years ago. It was, you know, understandable that people were concerned. We, we know a lot more. We know treatment plans. We know those types of things. So that's a nice place to be in.
Well, and it seems that the new variants are, are more transmittable, but not as difficult to get through. Having had it for my third time just two weeks ago, it seemed a lot easier to get through than the previous two.
Man, you should buy a lottery ticket, too. Sounds like you're lucky.
My daughter, who's a teacher, had it four times so far.
I am.
All right. Thank you so much.
I'm staying here.
Okay. So you're doing the survey report, you and Gary. Is Gary coming up?
He's, he's got a mic there.
If you need me, I'm here. I got your back, COVID Tim.
Thank you, Gary. All right. This survey report has to do with the Building Task Force, the information that we presented to you last time. I think we indicated to the board that we had hired a company, Y2 Analytics, to do some polling for us. I visited with them today. They're still collecting information. The response rates that they got were lower than they anticipated. And so they're going to be continuing to collect data through the weekend in hopes of getting more responses. So they're taking some added measures to, to accomplish that. And they're, they are doing that by precinct. So we'll have a precinct breakdown of that information when we get it. Once they get it, they think it'll take them most of next week. And by the end of next week, they should have us, have some information for us, some preliminary information. And then they are scheduled to present at your next board meeting that information to the school board. So I'll do my best to keep you updated on any preliminary information we get before that next board meeting so you can get a glimpse of kind of what the, what the feelings of our, our community are with regards to a bond.
So Tim, was this done by mail or phone or how, how'd they do it?
Everything, texts, mail, email. They're doing some phone stuff over the weekend to try to enhance their numbers a little bit. So Jared was one, he got one in the first round. So he was. round. So he was.
I got an email.
Did you?
And I haven't heard of anyone getting one, but I was just curious.
Tim, do you want to update the rest of the board on the conflicting bond that we might have with?
I believe I did send an email to all of you on that.
I did an email?
Yeah. Yep.
Thank you for sending that update. We appreciate that.
And then I wanted to update you on just four other items related to the, to the building task force that we've been working on. As you remember, we have, we own some land in Nibley right next to Heritage Elementary. So part of the recommendation of the building task force is to build an additional middle school in the south, or a middle school in the south end of the valley, convert Spring Creek to a, an elementary school. We, we did meet with Nibley City. They're fully supportive of that. That's the piece of property right next to Heritage Elementary. The school district at one time did have a plat map that showed the, the middle school sitting right next to the elementary. We've, we reviewed that with Nibley City. They're supportive of that as well. So I just wanted to give you that piece of information that that community is, is on board with us. Gary and I did go down to Roy and tour a middle school that was, that's two years into operation. It was unique because it's patterned after Ridge Line and Green Canyon schools. So it was fun to go through a middle school version of those, those two schools. Not exactly probably what we would build here or suggest that we built here. It's a seven through nine center. So we wouldn't have a ninth grade. Some of the facilities we wouldn't have a need for in a middle school of six, eight. So, but it gives us a good kind of starting point to start to, to look at and get some ideas from. We are making progress on land acquisition in North Logan, or no, sorry, Hyde Park for a potential middle school there. We've, we're under contract with a couple of parcels there, working on a third to round out that piece. So I just keep you updated on that. We're in really good shape there. That's north of, of Green Canyon High School. And final thing is we met today with the Cache County Sheriff's Office. So part of the building task force recommendation is that we look at school safety. And the Cache County Sheriff's Office has been very helpful on that, taking a layered approach to our building safety. And I think I went over that in pretty good detail last time, talking about doorbell, intercom systems, controlled pass, indoor locks, access control, those types of things. And they, they brought up several other ideas and kind of a, some priorities that they would see would be important. And we'll develop some of those plans as if, if you decide to move forward. We'll develop some of those plans and get that information out to the public in our presentations on what some of those plans are to enhance our building security. So.
How, how, how far are we along with the doorbell or video? I know some of the schools have it.
Yeah. Yeah. For the elementary schools, so I think I informed you last time, we were working on the 17 elementary schools. Our plan was to be done before school started. We're stuck in the same spot. Many are stuck in the, the devices are on a, won't be done till October 1st and shipped to us. So we have teams out in the elementary schools right now doing all the preliminary work of getting things wired and, and set up so that when those devices come in, we can slide them in place and be ready to go. We're hopeful that we can, we did have an alternate device we could get, but we, it's not exactly what we want. So worst case scenario, we could go that direction. But we're hopeful that we can, that that'll speed along a little bit and we can get those in and operating.
Anyone else have questions? All right. Thanks so much for that update.
All right. Thank you.
Uh, next up on the reports agenda, we have board member reports. Anyone?
You got mine.
Thanks for that work, by the way. Nice report. Okay. Moving on to the board president report. We met as an audit committee just be, previous to this meeting, just to give you a report on that. And the Jared and our internal auditor, Alan Allred, will be doing some budgeting, training for the several new-ish secondary principals and administrators in, in the district, as well as athletic directors and finance secretaries. Because we, our, our greatest risk, financial risk in the district is, seems to lie mostly in high school activities accounts. And so Jared and Alan are going to do some training where we have so many shuffle, so much shuffling going on with secondary administrators. They're going to do some training for those administrators as well as the, and include the athletic directors this year. Because we saw some issues last year with several athletic directors. So they will include all of those people in a training, probably that will happen in the first part of November, just so you know. And then Kathy asked me to remind you all that we need to do our master board certification. And if there's any, do any of you need to see how to get there and what we need to do? Because I have it, anyone besides Kathy? I have it pulled up on the computer and I can put it on the screen in front of you if you, if you want to. If not, I'll just explain. When you go into the master board certification, which is PowerUp on the USBA website, it's level four that you should be working on. And on each of those, there are six sections that we have to do assignments in. And most of them have one assignment and then, that we have to mark off, most of them. And we have to do the school finance training, open meeting training, and now school community council training. Those are required every year now. So, and you can do that training through the PowerUp site. And once those are done, on each of the sections, you mark the ones that you, the one that you've done, and then you add in some, something that you personally are working on in that area, like if it's accountability, or advocacy, or professional development, or something like that. Randall said that he has been working on his and is almost finished, has done quite a bit on his last week. So those are important for us to, a lot to show the legislature that yes, we do our stuff. We do learn. We continue our education as board members for this position and are, are working to be as up to date as possible. So if any of you need help with that, I'm happy to help you or, and I'll work with Kathy personally.
Thank you. Hey, I do have a question that you brought to my attention. So usually our school community council training has been when Mike trained the principals and the new presidents. So who is going to be doing that training? Because we would need to ask them.
Tim just raised his hand.
Okay. So we usually do that in October, I think. And Mike just set up a time and notified everybody and let us know when it was going to be, one on the north and one on the south end. And then people could go to whichever was most convenient. Yeah, we did do it during COVID, but he did it at the high school, out of Skyview. And I don't know. Didn't we just do Zoom once? No, he did, he did two of them.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, especially, especially since COVID, where we did start to do it that way. I think people really liked it. And he tried to keep it to about a half hour. So. Perfect. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
It hasn't. Nobody can hear him. Okay. Um, since our oldest superintendent is not here, would any of the assistant superintendents like to speak in his place? For his, because we're to the superintendent's report of the agenda.
Thank you, COVID Tim. The only report that I would say in, first of all, we're excited. This is my favorite time of year. I love, I don't know if you've noticed, but with the weather changing just a little this week, the mornings, there's just a little bit of nip in the air. And we still get excited about that. I don't know what it is about being an educator, but there's something about when that weather changes just a little that we still get excited. And I guess if, once we quit getting excited about that, maybe it's time to get out. But you just need to know that we are still excited. We've been working a lot behind the scenes on a lot of those things to be ready. Roger, and, and just a quick note on the, the doorbell system, the, the camera. I've asked my principals at the elementary to prepare for that, even though we don't have those in place yet and they won't quite be ready. We are asking our elementary principals to lock all doors, just like we did at the end of last year. And so of course they'll be open when the buses drop kids off and parents drop kids off. But once that bell rings and kids are in class, we'll have all doors, including the front one locked. And what we'll use in lieu of a ring doorbell system is a cell phone number right there for, for folks to call. And, and someone from the office will allow them in or double check. So we want to get, we've talked, Tim and I, and as we talked with the sheriff's department again just today, all of these things that we plan to do for safety and for security comes down to procedures. You can have all the equipment in the world. You can have all the fancy newest, latest and greatest. But if we don't train our folks and we don't follow through on those procedures, then they really don't do us much good. And so we want to start the year off, even though we don't have those ring doorbell systems installed, something similar to that so that those doors are locked and, and we have to take action in order to, to bring people in. So those are just in the forefront of our mind, excited about school started and, and starting and just the safety issues.
Great.
What about the barbecue? Do you need the board members to help?
Oh, that would be, Emily, Emily's got the spreadsheet on that. For sure.
Okay. Anything else? It's an exciting time of year. Thank you all for being here. Seeing that we have arrived at the end of our agenda, we will adjourn.